If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence. And now for a quote. Twenty years from now, you will be more disappointed by the things you didn't do rather than by the things, the ones you did. So throw off the Bolins, sail away from the safe harbor, catch the trade winds in your sails, explore, dream, discover, and that was unknown. Thank you.
Thank you. Does further there any additions or, and/or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, just the additions to the personal action that you received.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Purdy, do you have recognitions?
Yes, we have three recognitions this evening. Thank you for Chairman Martin, members of the board, members of the community, and colleagues. The first that we would like to recognize is our November Student Senior of the Month. Our November Student of the Month is a young lady pursuing the career field of zoology, and to that end, the student has committed to volunteering and participating in clubs or organizations, including the Girl Scouts of America, Odyssey of the Mind, the Leo Club, Key Club, the Creative Club, Side by Side, and the Pear Surf Shop and Food Pantry. She has been inducted into the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, due to her stellar academic success. Her immediate plan upon graduation is to attend a four-year college or university and major in biology. This young lady embodies the spirit of Picocin High, a tradition of excellence, as she models attributes of independence, intrinsic motivation, inquisitiveness, the pursuit of academic rigor. Please join me in congratulating our November Student of the Month, Ellen Clark. Previously, WHRO came out to PES to collect images and film of students utilizing the PES Learning Garden. They interviewed students, a teacher, the principal, and two master gardeners who volunteer regularly at that site. From this, WHRO created a vignette capturing this wonderful resource that we have available for our elementary students. There are actually two videos and an article, and here's the article now.
The Learning Garden came about just as an initiative for our school to kind of get to know the environment around us. The volunteers that come to our school are able to educate students outside. We educate on different animals that live around here, the nature, the climate, different birds, and different species. In Picocin, we live in this kind of area where there's so much of a diversity in wildlife. So a lot of it came about just because of the passion and initiative of volunteers in our community.
Teachers are using the Learning Garden to enhance their science lessons about plants and life cycles. Right now, we have some science lessons about weather and clouds, and sometimes our teachers will take advantage of very nice days and have that as a background for their students during just a real outdoor or in the midweek, so it can be used for a variety of purposes.
It's so fun to see how they get excited, and they're not on their tablets, they're not on their computers, and they need to be outside. Kids don't go outside and just hang out the way they used to. And so they discover things they didn't know were exciting. They like the bugs, even the girls, they like the spiders, they think it's interesting, and that just gets them excited about learning different things and being outdoors, which kids don't go outside anymore.
It's calming outside because I hear the birds chirping, and it's very cool. It's pretty awesome because you get to see a bunch around you, and then it kind of feels more cool because you're outside and you're not just in the building or on the desk.
WHRO, owned by 21 school divisions, supported by people like you.
We want to thank WHR for creating that vignette for us, and also a very special thanks to Andre Jones, Belinda Elliott, and Amy Hawk, who work with WHRO for creating it. And coming down the line, they've actually created a couple more videos to showcase the high schools' One Lunch program, as well as the Veterans Project, so keep your eye out for that. We are excited to announce that Picocin Schools is maintaining their Purple Star recognition from the VDOE and the Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity for Military Children. To be awarded this title, a lot of hard work must be done to ensure our military-connected students and families transition well into our division, have support available, and have a community built around inclusion and connection. Our students, I'm sorry, our schools have clubs and programs to help our new students transition, community events to recognize and honor our military family members, such as our recent PES Veterans Breakfast, the High School Veterans Project, and Cookies for Troops, and we also recognize April as the month of the military child as a division. That month is filled with fun events and spirit days built around the military-connected students and their families. And another component of our success is our military liaison, Ms. Terilyn Williams, who is going to be with us this evening but could not, could not attend. She provides opportunities for us as a division to increase our resources and offerings to families. We're very grateful for her continued support. The last thing to mention about this honor is that this recognition belongs to all four schools, and we are only one of two divisions in the entire state who can say that. And for that, we would like to thank Ms. Ambrosio at the high school for running our Student to Student Club, as well as our school counselors. Skylar Zimmerman, Katie Chapman, Amanda Goan, Stacy Tuttle, George Cunningham, Catherine Banton, and Lynn Enen, we thank you for your dedication and the programs that you bring to our students. Please join me in congratulating them. At this time, I'd like to have our counselors come up and receive a recognition. That concludes the recognitions for this evening. Thank you, Ms. Purdy.
That brings us to presentations and reports. Up first is our colleagues from WHRO, Bert Schmidt and Elmer Seward.
Madam Chair, Mr. Tillot, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Bert Schmidt, I'm the President and CEO of WHRO, and Elmer Seward is with me, as well as Mitzi Falsu, we're both with WHRO, and they've got the, all the answers when you ask me a hard question that I don't have the answer to. I got backup here. And before I get into my presentation, I would mention that videos you saw is airing on WHRO a lot right now. So if you watch it all, four or five times a day, it's airing, and since Mr. Tillot was so smart to get on, jump on board early, you're really the only division that's on our air right now, so you're getting a lot of play. At some point, there may be 20 other divisions there, but right now, you're getting a lot of play, able to brag about the stuff you're doing here in the division. So we like to brag about our schools and the great work they're doing. So the reason I come to you, you have hard copies, I see, of our impact statement. We provide you that report every year, and of course, we provide this to you because you're one of the 21 school divisions that literally own the license to WHRO. We're the only media company, commercial or non-commercial, owned by a collaboration of school divisions. We work together, do things once rather than 21 times, save taxpayers lots of money, and improve the service for all school divisions, small, large, rural, urban. We all work together as a group, and we meet regularly with superintendents, school board representatives, and all sorts of folks throughout the cabinet level of the division. So the services we provide, E-Media VA, we've been providing to our schools throughout the entire state for about 10 years now. It is a digital learning repository of learning objects, anything you can digitize, pictures, video, games, lesson plans, quizzes. It's in one place. We work at the national level with organizations like Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress, but more importantly, with local Virginia organizations. We take their great educational content, we correlate it to the Virginia standards of learning, we put all sorts of metadata so it's easily searchable, and it's free to every teacher, every student, every parent throughout the entire Commonwealth. This was used last year over 2 million times. Of course, digital learning is where everybody is right now. We do a lot of stuff in the early childhood space. One of the most rewarding things for us is our vans. It's tough to do field trips nowadays, getting the buses and coordinating and all. We kind of have a reverse field trip, where our vans come out to you. We have three vans, a STEM van, a literacy van, and an environmental science van. We come out, we meet with your early childhood educators, really K through 3, work with their programs, and have a really fun experience. You can see all the various programs, the characters that the kids are all familiar with, all the Elmos and the big birds and all these characters that they all know so well, and the kids get so excited to be involved with our vans. When COVID was going on, we couldn't, we could no longer read stories to kids in person, which is what we wouldn't often do, so we started a series called Ms. Martha Reads. Martha Razer, who runs our Early Childhood Services Department, started reading these books written by young children and did a series on Facebook. Started really as a COVID thing, but then we got about 10,000 hits every week. So we're continuing that. Every Friday, Martha reads a story written by a student from around the region. They write and illustrate these stories. We do a lot of professional development for your teachers. You can see a list here, just some of the professional development we did the past year. Your report has a more in-depth report of all that professional development. Used to be most of it was in person, now a lot of it is done on Zoom, that's the world we live in today, but occasionally, occasionally we will bring people into the station. This is a big piece here, is the online courses. We have developed for you 27 online, mostly high school courses, a couple of middle schools, but mostly high school courses. We're the manufacturer, we make the course, we give them to you, they work within your learning management system, use your policies, they still are expected to be done with teachers. It can be fully online, flipped, hybrid, whatever model you want to use. I'm going to show you a video. The video is specifically about economics and personal finance, but the attributes that are discussed in the video could be attributed to any of the 27 courses that we offer you and that you have.
WHRO's digital learning team reads high-quality and engaging content used by teachers, students, families, and administrators across Virginia. Economics and Personal Finance is a full-year online course that is one example of WHRO content utilized by school divisions. This course has 13 modules filled with videos, learning objects, content, learning activities, assessments, reflections, and more. This digital content is aligned with Virginia's standards of learning, promotes Virginia's five Cs, and provides students with multiple opportunities to demonstrate their knowledge and materials through real-world, authentic experiences. Students begin their studies in a course-oriented, where they discover how to navigate the course. They also meet TJ, a high school student, and his peers, who are involved in an after-school economics and personal finance club. Students learn from TJ's financial decisions and mistakes through the complete videos at the beginning of each module. Each module has several topics or lessons that allow students to check their knowledge before receiving an exam. At the end of each module, students either complete a project, test, or both related to all of the module topics. There's also a module reflection, where students can analyze what they have learned and make conclusions between the content and their everyday life. The module summary provides a digest of module information and prepares students for the next module. In addition to the intriguing module, our student resources section is filled with tools to help students with assignments and projects. We also create an instructor's deck to assist the teachers. WHRO's digital learning team works diligently to design aesthetically appealing content that represents people from diverse cultures and ethnicities and provides multiple learning factors. Additionally, our content is fully accessible and includes options for students, like using a keyboard for navigation, providing ADA-compliant answers, principles, closed captioning, descriptive alt text, reducing conflict of duty, and much more. Fortunately, our team can install our digital content into multiple learning management systems. This skill set helps us meet the needs of school divisions and provides options to use our content entirely online or in blended learning environments. Economics and Personal Finance is just one example of the breadth and depth of educational content that WHRO's digital learning department creates and distributes to school divisions.
So again, while the video was focused on economics and personal, personal finance, the traits you saw are within all those 27 courses that you own. We are in the process now of working on our environmental science course, you'll get that delivered next year, as well as an environmental science video series, and Mitzi's team is spending a lot of time getting those prepared for you. We also have a couple data science courses in the pipeline for, for out years, we've gotten some funding for that. We want to make sure these courses are going to be intriguing and interesting to children, so we've created, we, me, Mitzi, has created a student advisory board. We bring students from around the region, come together. I know we have students from this division who are part of that student advisory board, and they review and assess the courses and advise us how to make it more interesting and better for the final customer. You know, it's customer, checking in with the customer. We love to celebrate smart kids, and we do that a couple of ways. First off is the PBS Kids Writers Contest. These are children K through 5, they write and illustrate stories, they send them into us, we have a judging panel, we end up doing a whole celebration that we record for television, and the stories from the writers contest are the ones that Martha reads earlier on. It's these stories that should, so there's all original content, no rights issues and all. And we've been doing that, I don't know, 20 years maybe, something like that? It's in the, I've been around 16 years, it's before my time, so. Of course, the spelling bee is coming up, this will be our 17th year coming up, you'll want to make sure your middle school kids have the local bee here, if you haven't done it yet, I don't know.
I think Picocin has.
They've already, you're already signed up, that's a good thing. You'll have your local bee, then the champion will come to WHRO for the regional bee. The winner of the regional bee goes to the national spelling bee. One of these days, we're going to get a champion, but here's a little bit from last year.
Each year, middle school students from across the region compete for the opportunity to represent our area in the district's national spelling bee. The state is set, and the competition is fierce. Who will take on the title of spelling bee champion?
Watch the WHRO's spelling bee.
Watch the spelling bee, April 1st.
Watch the spelling bee, April 1st, at 2:00 PM on WHRO.
I think we have some people trying out for talent on my air, so it's always fun. And finally, the Great Computer Challenge, some of you may be, have been at an age where you participate yourself, because we're going into year 39, I believe, 39, 39th year. This is K through 12 students, they form teams within the division and compete over various software programs and languages. It's a, it's a day on the ODU campus, it's immersive, it's, you can see by the picture, the trophies are as big as some of the, some of the contestants, but it's a wonderful way. We have a elementary or junior division, then we have the middle and high school students get together, and again, we've been doing this for 39 years. It's a great way. For many of these kids, it's the first time spending real time on the college campus. It exposes them to what the possibilities may be for them, so not only are they competing, but they get to really be immersed in the, and we work very closely with ODU and their professors, so it's a great experience for their students. And frankly, Picocin has a great track record in the Great Computer Challenge, so just side note. As board members, you care about the ROI, your return on investment. On page 14 of your report, you'll see that you invest $3 per student, that translated last year to about $6,000. You received value in savings last year of $806,000. That's for every dollar invested, you receive value in savings of $132. Again, a 1 to 30, 132 ROI. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ellen Wildman, historical drawings.
My name is Ellen Wildman Facella, and this is my son Mason Facella. Yep, there they go. I was a teacher at Picocin City Schools for a number of years, architecture and engineering, Mason is a graduate, and have a unique opportunity. My father, Walter Wildman, and his grandfather, was somewhat what I consider a famous architect in the area. He began practice in the 1950s after graduating from UVA, Virginia Tech, and then UVA, went to both, because I'm a Virginia Tech grad, I have to preface that. He then began his own firm in 1959 and practiced until about 2012. Throughout his career, some highlights, you may know some of these buildings, Hampton City Hall, which in the day was very controversial because it was the upside-down building. No, it's not, it's not, it's a nice building. The Virginia Iron Space Center, Woodside High School Heritage. Throughout his career, he designed well over 100 schools throughout the state of Virginia and won some pretty prestigious awards because of the educational concept of openness in the school. My dad, his grandfather passed away 2020, and the doors to his office closed subsequently, I think in 2022. So I went over to retrieve some of the documents, and about 3,000 drawings and tubes were going in the dumpster. Somehow, they had just been overlooked, no one had been contacted, so I proceeded to haul them all to our house. We have 3,000 drawings at the house, and in them, I discovered, which I had known Dad had done the work, the, so he worked on the renovations, the first renovations to the middle school, Picocin Middle School. Now, I know it's not everyone's favorite building, but he did do the primary school and the high school. So I discovered the originals, and as an architect myself, I know that originals are very valuable because blueprints fade. So of course, I called Mr. Kachmili immediately and I said, "I have something I think you would really like." So in these drawing sets are the original drawings to those schools that I mentioned, and I would like the school system to have them because I know my dad would. There's valuable information, I have opened them, Mr. Kachmili and I have looked, there are site plans, there are topographical surveys. The city spent a lot of money to have this done, and we would like you to have the originals. So here you go. I don't know where you would like them, if you'd like them back against the wall because they're going to fall, but.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yeah, we're making the rounds to the various school systems.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
I want to get a picture with you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Back here, Charlie.
Thank you, Jen. Instruction update, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Burbidge, our school board members, staff from Picocin City Public Schools, and of course, our community members that are with us tonight. Today, we are going to be talking a little bit about All In Virginia. It's our Governor Youngkin's plan and our initiative to fight chronic absenteeism, learning loss from our pandemic, pandemic, and also to really beef up literacy and make sure that our students have evidence-based strategies and instructional resources. So we'll start with attendance. The All In Virginia Initiative was presented by Governor Youngkin, of course, to ensure that all of our Virginia students get the academic support that they need to recover learning loss, boost their attendance, as well as their academic performance. This is divided up into three areas, as mentioned, attendance, literacy, and learning, which gets you your all. And we are all in, although Picocin Middle School did coin it first. So during the 22-23 school year, nearly one out of three 3rd through 8th grader students were absent from school. When we look at chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 18 days or more of school. These numbers come from Virginia, these are not our Picocin numbers, but this gives you a little background about where it's coming from. As you know, attendance plays a critical role. From the 2018-19 school year to the 22-23 school year, Virginia's chronic absenteeism rate grew, and it raised and nearly doubled from 9% in 2018-19 to 17% in 22-23. Students in grades 3 through 8 who are chronically absent score, on average, 25% lower in mathematics and 18% lower in reading than their peers who regularly attend school. That pushes into literacy. If you're not there in class to learn the material, there's an impact. Literacy is what we have seen has taken a toll. So the Virginia Literacy Act came about, we mentioned it last year and reviewed it before, but in the 24-25 school year, just to remind you, students in grades K through 3 will have received core literacy instruction in scientifically-based reading research, as well as evidence-based literacy instruction. Students who do not meet literacy benchmarks will be also working with reading specialists to create an individualized student reading plan, outlining evidence-based instruction that will be utilized and intervention opportunities. Parents may participate in the development of the plan as well. It truly is a school and home effort. Families will have access to online resources and support to support literacy development at home. In every classroom, our teachers will be using evidence-based literacy curriculum, they will access student learning to, by using the approved screeners. There's actually one that is being piloted now, it is our VOWS screener, and it's scheduled to go live next school year, which basically kind of takes replacement of POWS, we have now made it VOWS and, and beefed it up a bit. And by we, I mean UVA. We will also be using student-level data to inform instruction and intervention, and of course, participating in our staff development opportunities will ensure teachers, administrators, reading specialists, all receive professional development. Our reading specialists have already started that process, they started attending last summer, it has gone on through the year. VDOE has provided a, a number of resources to help us along our journey, and that's what we'll be using to guide the process. So as I mentioned, reading specialists will be developing and monitoring our student progress on these plans. They develop, they monitor, and they will be the ones that touch base with our teachers and also with our families. Every division based upon All In, or based upon the VLA, is responsible for developing a literacy plan, which is in process right now, ensuring the use of evidence-based literacy curriculum. Staffing reading specialists support our K-8 students by 24-25, which as you know, will mean we will need a reading specialist in our middle schools, and provide professional development, which is ongoing. So that brings us to, we've got the curriculum, we have solid foundation in place, what are we going to do to catch our students up, right, and bridge the gap? That brings us to high-intensity academic tutoring. Governor Youngkin unveiled his High Intensity Academic Tutoring Playbook for Virginia public schools to use as a guide in an effort to accelerate student learning. It will be closing achievement gaps by providing guidance on student identification, the selection process, options for schools to review, and models to consider during the planning process. So in the effort to combat chronic absenteeism, Governor Youngkin has established a task force, it's the Chronic Absenteeism Task Force. They have met, I believe, two times now. What they've gone through, the process, is really digging into research, finding out what is going to bring students here, what is the root cause of students not coming back to school, and they are in process of creating a playbook. So we will be modeling our chronic absenteeism team after the governor's team. In fact, they encourage you to watch their team meetings and try to utilize some of the same strategies. So we'll follow, follow our playbook, and we'll begin by reviewing our current So we'll follow our playbook and we'll begin by reviewing our current attendance policies and our plans, and then starting to discuss potential topics. Some of those potential topics may be time recovery sessions with tutoring provided while students are there, positive incentives for students and for staff members, and of course seeking out from our parents, our staff members, and our board, of course, ways that you can get involved. On our task force that we had, it will actually be our Chronic Absenteeism Team, and we're going to be looking to involve students, involve parents, will involve our PCPS staff members, administrators, and of course, we would ask that we have a school board representative join the team as well. The more the merrier to help get our students back into school. So the second tier, of course, is literacy for All In. With literacy, what we are looking at doing is following VLA first and foremost. As you're aware, the VLA timeframe has been pushed back quite a bit. So what was approved to begin last year as far as K-5 curriculum adoption, where they had recommendations, that took a little bit longer. They ended up dividing it up into K through three, and then four through five, six through eight, and then six through eight supplemental, K through five supplemental. Definitely proved to be a big task and a big undergoing. So we finally, as of last Friday, November 16th, have received a list of K-5 curriculum options, and that is available on VDOE website. They met on Thursday. We planned our literacy task force, literacy team that we have, and we met Friday to meet with vendors. Vendors were able to go over the different curriculums in detail, show us all the different options with our leaders in the room. Our literacy team is comprised of administrators and, I don't know what is going on today. Administrators and we have teachers that are every grade level, moving up from our K through five right now. It's K through 12 overall, but we have divided up for what we have and what's available so that we can review from vendors. So we did vendor presentations. In addition to that, we looked at potential supplemental resources. However, they are not formally approved until spring, probably around January, February. What we are pleased to report, though, that is that Letters, which is this program that we have been using, very intensive, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It's an intensive professional development course in which PCPS has enrolled several of our K-5 teachers. I'm enrolled and trying to teach the little ones to read from that high school background. But it's intense, but it provides you the background of brain development, how the brain works. It talks about what literacy skills need to be taught. It talks about why and how to teach them, how to plan for them, and delves into the research base behind the recommendations. So the first part of this course goes over why learning to read can be difficult, how the reading brain works, and so on. Our goal is to have all of our K-5 teachers put through the process. It is a little bit expensive for us, so we have really been trying to use that money because research shows it's effective, it's science-based, and it really starts working with decoding those sounds. All right. It also introduces a simple view of reading, which is a research-tested model. The whole skilled reading is the product of two factors. You have your word recognition, and then that's the decoding, the letters on the page, and you have your language comprehension, right? So understanding what it means. So our literacy leadership team has reviewed these materials, and the next step now is going to be to put them into our school building so that they can meet with their PLC teams and grade levels and they can review them, using a rubric that is provided of what we need based on our student data and what research says is effective. What I will share with you is VDOE has already gone through all this and they have provided a resource guide, and that resource guide is, of course, on the website for VDOE. After that's done, you see K-5 textbook adoption process. And so once our teachers have had a chance to review it and we have been able to narrow it down, we start that process where we have the chosen textbook, resources, supplemental materials. They're posted in the public library. It's a 30-day window for our community parents to go and look at it and check it out. So that will definitely be publicized throughout. All right. High-intensity academic tutoring. It's not that one. All right. So we start with the governor's playbook, which we mentioned. He outlines in the playbook for all of the school divisions in Virginia. First, it's going to be student selection. How are students identified for this academic tutoring? It will be students in grades three through eight, which would be at PES and PMS. We will be looking at SOL data and looking at SGA data. So the playbook identifies that students who have failed their SOL are considered to be not proficient, and those are the students that we really focus on first. And then we look at those students who have scored anywhere from 400 to possibly around 430, 440, depending on the assessment that's given. Those students will receive high-intensity tutoring with academic tutors, with teachers, retired teachers. And then they also encourage the online adaptive kind of computerized software. I'm thinking about you, Dr. Dale, because I know we've talked about this before, but it's the one that meets you where you are and then it adjusts based on where you perform and it teaches you the skills you miss and embed them in our current curriculum. So we don't really say that it remediates. We say it accelerates because you are still staying on grade level, filling gaps, and moving up. The state's also provided some tutoring models, those resources, the online services that are provided, and that schools are looking to incorporate into their programs. Pecosin Elementary and the middle school will utilize small group pull-out sessions, additional instructional blocks where needed, so students can be pulled, and skill acceleration programs in the mornings as well as during the school day as appropriate. I'll be providing some general information regarding All In to all of our families, and it'll go out via Parent Square. And then that will follow up from Pecosin Elementary School and Middle School Administration, which will give more specific information to their parents. And then that brings us to the budgeting piece. We were very fortunate that we received $458,926 to be put towards our All In Virginia efforts. So as you see up there, VDOE has us broken down into different categories. They recommend that school divisions allocate the overall $418 million that was dispersed. Remember, we get the $450, almost $9,000. But they want to see that the money goes into proven programs that will achieve the greatest student impact, and they divide that up into 70% approximate. They said approximately in there, but 70% towards high dosage tutoring, 20% going towards our VLA, Virginia Literacy Act and Curriculum Resources, and then approximately 10% for attendance. And so we have tried to stick with that model as well. PCPS received the money we have to support the All In Virginia Initiative, and typically divisions would receive this funding in the summertime, and that would give us time to prepare and to plan. But as you're aware, over last summer, we had a little bit of a fiscal impact due to the error in the calculation tool by the state. So we just now received our new budgeting numbers and have been able to kind of divvy up and know what's going where. Our spending plan is being submitted to the state for vetting because that is required. And while it doesn't require our school board approval, we still want to keep you informed and keep you in the loop, and so you will see that on your consideration agenda as well, and it is included in your packet. And for PCPS, just a quick breakdown overview, we will be using $100,000 of the All In funding we are putting towards our curriculum for our K through five learning. In your sheets, you will see, I think it's the $29,000, and that has been moved down to our attendance because we needed to put transportation in there for tutoring and transportation in there for the other, so that bumped down that way. Also, combined with the carryover funding that we have requested, we planned and budgeted for this last year. Unfortunately, VDOE has kind of pushed it along as they've done their recommendation. So we're looking to use the requested carryover funding that was already earmarked, along with $100,000 in order to purchase our curriculum. This will not just be K-5, it will be K-8. Right now, we have solidified K-5, and as soon as they give us his recommendations for six through eight, then we'll be able to progress in that same manner we did K-5 with the six through eight literacy curriculum. So it's important to note that the plan that you have in front of you is fluid and it was outlined as such. It's an organic plan. Things will change, maybe that we find that we need this or we don't have as many need for tutors, but it's the best estimation based on the data that we have at this time. We are pretty lucky. Many school divisions right now are desperately seeking tutors. We're fortunate that we didn't have such a huge need based upon SOL data for students that really needed intensive tutoring. Many divisions have had to hire external, up in hundreds, 200s of tutors to come in and provide that small group tutoring. Luckily for us, the way that it's worked out with our elementary school and middle school, I have to say that Ms. Grisco and also Ms. Bunting have done a fantastic job with their team in trying to look at the data, plan it out, where can we really target student skills? So we will be using our own teachers at this time, who are certified in the area, with a couple of shifts in order to put them where they will have dedicated time on a small group kind of session, and they'll be sending more information out about that. But whenever we can use our own teachers, we train them, we know they're certified, they know our students, and that's always best for them. So that kind of concludes the presentation as far as All In is concerned and our spending plan that goes along with it. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Yeah, I have a question. When you said one in three third graders, what were you talking about? I was.
That?
It was towards the beginning.
Your first point.
Oh, yeah. That, I think. I'm coming right back there.
Like a date or something, or year or something you gave?
I think I confused myself. All right. So what they're saying is that one, not three, I apologize, one in five, third through eighth grade students were considered chronically absent, using the definition of missing 18. That is for Virginia as a whole, and that's in the All In Virginia Plan. So the overview memo that is sent out, I believe that came out in January from, might have been the September or January memo, but that was the data that was used to state this is why chronic absenteeism is such a push for us in Virginia, because this is one of the data points. So it was one in five of three through eight that were chronically absent, which was double that of 2018-19. Sorry about the confusion on that one.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. And K through five textbook adoption, what are the steps going to be for that?
We always follow VDOE guidelines for that and we follow our school board policy. So typically what occurs is once we go through the vetting process, we ensure that our teachers have had feedback and they've looked at it. It meets the standards and aligns. VDOE has actually done most of that for us. This was very intense on their part. So we come back and look at our data and say, what is it that our students need in Pecosin, looking specifically where are our gaps and our holes? What is it that we are doing well and what is it that we need a textbook to kind of supplement? What they have stated, though, is the curriculum and textbooks that are there that we are choosing from are your primary curriculum. They are, it isn't that you use what you've used over here unless it is an approved supplement. So for example, one of the things that's up to be approved is UFLY. UFLY is something that we have been starting with our teachers and doing some training. Comes out of the University of Florida, which is premier teaching of decoding and teaching those beginning sounds and how to decode and read. So that's the first part, we look at that. Once we look at that information and we get our things together, the process goes by putting it out for public comment, and then when we do public comment, they're able, parents, community members can go to the public library because it's open later, kind of like what we did with other curriculum options. And then they can provide that feedback to us to look at and review. And then at that point, when we look at it, make those decisions, look at the rubric we use, we bring that to the school board and say, "Hey, school board, this is what we've got, this is what we're seeing, this is the data we have to show you, and we're asking you to approve it." It's similar to last year when we did our health text, how we went through that process with the health textbook.
So with the public comment, is there any way that we can have a public hearing instead so that we have all the comments in one night, you know, so it's not separated through multiple meetings?
I'm with you on that. The only problem, though, is that it is a 30-day window. So that is the, it has to be a 30-day window where it's open, and the fear would be that some of our parents may work at night, some may work during the day, so if you pick a time for public comment to come in, you may miss some of the other. That's typically the procedure that's outlined by VDOE.
And then last, so the J-LARC study that recently came out that said we were underfunded. What, is there any anticipation for that for Pecosin?
I can speak to that, yeah. Everybody is kind of on the edge of our seats to see the response from the General Assembly to J-LARC study. That study was pretty compelling, especially if you read it in details, in detail, it does indict the school's funding process pretty seriously. And if the General Assembly takes a serious look at the J-LARC study, we should see a shift in the funding process for schools in a lot of ways, not just in the amount of money that schools get to meet our needs, but secondly, the process used to get the funding. It's been a very distorted, if you, you know, every year we come to you guys and say, "Oh, there's a state raise," and then the city has to come up with half of that. That's part of this study, saying that that gives an unfair burden to local governments and the tax base to try to fund the mandate of educating our children. So that's just one small piece of it, but we're all in hopeful anticipation that we'll see some serious movement in the General Assembly in this biennium budget to address the details of the J-LARC study. But very good point. You'll be, as soon as we hear something, of course, we'll be reporting out to you as we kind of watch the tea leaves as that unfolds.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much. I knew I was waiting. I was waiting for you.
On the playbook for the attendance, how much is that as like known or how much does that still have to be made up?
They haven't released it yet. So I think that we know what brings students into school and they're looking for root causes and things, I think as, not to my own personal thing, but I think we can all notice with our colleagues, public restaurants, everywhere else, that there was just kind of a mindset shift where people stayed home, enjoyed it, so it's now getting back to where we were and bringing them back in. So it's changing a mindset, too. But as soon as we know that, we'll share.
Yeah, and I just wanted to weigh in on that as well, that the committee's only met once and they're meeting again, I believe, between Thanksgiving and winter break. We're also watching that closely to see what they come out with because they're privy to a lot of national data they're looking at. This was not certainly just a common wealth issue. It's every school system in the country saw a radical drop from COVID in attendance. Brown said it's a mind shift, which, and we're going to watch that closely, but it will no doubt require us to come to this board and look at policies. We have some pretty traditional policies for attendance. There's, we're going to see some creative ideas come out of this. I'm excited to see that because I've always thought attendance was a, we could do better at how we account for students' learning versus seat time. So there are some interesting things in that. We may even, I'm just going to throw a nugget out there, a lot of states are looking at makeup time. You miss school, you come another time and get the learning when it's relevant, instead of just calculating seat time. So those are some of the things that the committee, I'm told, is looking at.
Just a public service announcement. As you recall from the data presentation, I think two meetings ago, at the primary school, all of ours were right there at 15% at the middle school, the high school, and the elementary school. At the primary school, and you guys are doing a great job over there, but at the primary school, we hit 22%, which is far over chronic absenteeism rates. And what we see is that we've also got to really work with our parents and our community members that we've got to keep the kids in school. We can't, if we've got vacations, we've got to plan them for summertime or other times because the learning's important and there's data that suggests that it directly impacts your literacy in math schools.
Interesting how they put in technology to shift the camp so, I mean, you can make up your work. I mean, being absent doesn't mean you're accountable for it and then you're still at the school because it's getting dinged for it, so.
Absolutely. But we know we have our learners who can.
One last question, really, with the staffing, with the teachers. Now, is that, you know, can it? Now, is that, you know, can it be like they get the supplemental pay, paying the tutors so they don't feel like they're burned out? That they're compensated for their new role?
Oh, we're going to definitely compensate them because there will be extra that is involved that goes along with it. And if you are providing that tutoring, then there will be, you know, some time that you have to actually plan it to make sure that you are linking it to those students' needs and, and grouping it around. So we have some really creative scheduling that our ladies have done at the elementary and middle school. But it has taken a lot of just meetings of the mind to figure out how to make it work with school already in session when you have a schedule out there. So, but they've done a great job.
So last meeting, we talked about volunteering and stuff like that. Is that still open for all in Virginia?
We, we need, and I'm going to borrow the word all, we need all. The challenge is finding folks who can commit the kind of time needed to, to, to first train on this all, this high intensity tutoring. There is kind of a, a protocol and a program that can be used in every area. There's some online programming that, that the tutor can use to supplement what they're doing. There's two programs the state has furnished for, for free.
We have, one of them is Ignite Learning. Ignite Learning, however, focuses on more of that K-two, K-three decoding for literacy. So it's going to be those students who are having those decoding gaps. If you're, if you're working on comprehension, if you're working on fluency, maybe. But after you get to the like multi-syllabic words, then that's not really for you. They have ZERN, ZERN is the math program. We've had our math specialist and coach look at it and to evaluate that as well. And so there are, it's kind of a more basic program. We've also purchased Exact Path through Admentum, which is a great acceleration program. So we've kind of reached out to other divisions to see, you know, what they use, what they've seen, what data they've had. And so we're excited about that. That goes K-12 and it will advance students as well. It doesn't just accelerate remediate, but it will take you where you are and advance you.
And that, that's just tools and resources for the tutors that we're begging for. You, you've seen that we sent out a, a message for volunteers. We've got a new vetting program that we're feeling really good about. We've gotten some really good feedback from it. So that's just one piece of it. But the lion's share of this work is going to be done by our qualified, certified teachers. And that, the, the lion's share of the expenditure here is to compensate our teachers for this, this extra mission that, that, that they're undertaking. So it's going to be a challenge. We're all kind of going through it, all hundred and thirty-three school divisions are kind of going through this together. We all believe in it. There's a lot of great research behind high intensity tutoring. It does work and can, can move the instructional needle pretty fast.
I have a question, too. So before COVID, I don't think we had as many half days that we have now. Do you think that kind of contributes to teachers? Parents saying, well, if you're going to send them home on a half day this day, why can't I keep them home on a day this day and not in the seats? And I think it kind of sends an impression that we need to kind of maybe explain to the parents a little more what those half days are doing and why they're sending them home. Because then they're like, well, every Wednesday I have to find, every other Wednesday I have to find someone to do my kid because you're sending them home. Now there's a Monday and there's something special going on, why should I have put them in school?
Your question is so timely.
You're exactly right. We, one of the things to keep in mind is to separate the thinking of days versus hours. The, the state has, the state law says you have to have a hundred and eighty days or nine hundred and ninety hours. Well, we log almost eleven hundred hours in Pecosin with our current schedule, which is an extra thirteen school days over the hundred and eighty required. So we are very focused on instructional time and we send that message every way we know how. Your, your kids need to be in school. We, we feel like we're overcompensating for that. But that message, you know, Mr. Childress is, is, is an important one. When school's in session and you, you're healthy enough to come to school, you ought to be in school. There's really great things going on there. And the research is crystal clear. If you're in school, you're learning, those kids do significantly better than kids who are chronically absent or even miss a day here and there. I mean, it's, it's important to be in school, but very good point. The half days are, the other side of the half days, just to put in a little plug for the value of those days, our teachers really, really value that time. They work collaboratively. All the things that we're talking about when they learn to do that is in these half days because they're teaching kids the rest of the time. And these eleven half days that we've, you have built into the calendar at, at our staff's request, our teachers will tell you to a person they're, they're extremely valuable in learning how to sharpen their, their skills.
I think showing the public what they do during that would probably be very valuable to people being seen, maybe on Parent Square or something. Send out, hey, on this day, this is what we did. So it doesn't just seem like, okay, your kids are sent home. I think that's.
Just to let you know, in order to keep our, our teachers current and to make sure that they get all of this training, we have fantastic teachers in our division. And it's exciting to go into the classrooms and see them working and see what they do. But that takes effort and it also takes that planning behind the scenes and providing professional development. And teachers are overburdened, you know this. And instead of asking them to stay after for hours, we try to find that time where we give them quality professional development that they can take the next day and impact student learning. Yes, sir.
So for chronic absenteeism, is that excused absences or unexcused? Or both?
Both, it is both. So that means that your child could be sick, you could be in the emergency room, okay. But that's why you're given like a small number to use. But when you add more, the state does not care if it's excused or if it's unexcused. And once you hit that indicator, you're chronically absent and we take the ding.
So we are going to work on that policy because I know that policy is very vague. We've allowed sports crews to go somewhere and be out. That's not part of our school system and we excused it. So, I mean, I think we need to kind of iron in and unfortunately my ruffle some feathers would say this is our policy and this is where we're at.
We're all in. Yep. Thank you so much. Thank you. Dr. Ratliff, operations update?
Good evening, Madam Chair Martin, Mr. Till and board members. Tonight I do have the operations update for you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about a couple of different things tonight. I first wanted to go ahead and review with you the, some of the operational grants that we've been awarded over the last year. Just to, to give everybody an idea, kind of what, what we do and some of the efforts that we make to try to bring in money to help cover things because things are so expensive. You all know about the School Security Officer Grant that we got. It was a four-year grant, roughly two hundred thousand dollars per year. Over the four-year time period, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, we will not end up accessing all of that money. When I wrote the grant, I did write it for the maximum number possible, just so if we were able, we could. But we're going to have the money available there. We currently do actually have a School Resource Officer hired and working at the high school. We thought we had another one coming to you tonight to begin at the elementary school, but we do not yet. So we have other, we're hopeful we have a couple of other people that are, are looking that way. The Virginia Department of Education Food Service Equipment Grant, a combi oven at, at the high school and the elementary school and a dishwasher that was about a hundred and eight thousand dollars that we did not have to spend from our money. The Department of Criminal Justice Services, the DCJS, the digital mapping that we did, that did not have to come from our funding. We were able to get a grant from DCJS to cover that. The Virginia Risk Assessment, or Virginia Risk Sharing Association, you'll hear us call it Versa if you hear anyone, hear us talking about it. That's our insurance carrier. Got two different four thousand dollar grants from them. One of those helped fund security cameras and one of them helped fund the new ACON that went in at the elementary school. That honestly just about covered about half the cost of both of those. And fresh as of yesterday, we just found out that we have from the, the School Safety and Security Grant from VDOE for twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Now, when I wrote these grants for the school safety and security, I wrote them for the weapons detection systems. Grants were written for each, or the grant was comprehensive of being for all of the schools. Each of the schools had a different amount. For example, the high school I wrote in three different systems because we have three main doors that we utilize for entrances. So really the, the number of systems that I wrote in the grant was dependent upon the school. We didn't really have a say over which we were awarded and which we weren't awarded. But the primary school did get awarded that. So hopefully sooner than later, we can start working and looking at going forward with that. Primary school, primary school. I said the elementary school, it's the primary school, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it is, no, I have elementary. It is the primary school that got the grant, I apologize. So that total amount over the, over the last year is about nine hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're looking at in operational expenses. Playgrounds, talk just a little bit about playgrounds. So I've talked to you for months about trying to get this handicapped accessible carousels installed. That is finally done. The one on the left is at the primary school, the one on the right is at the elementary school. And if you look, what looks like asphalt around them, that's actually a material called porable play. It's kind of like a trampoline when you, when you get on it. It's, they're, they're very nice. Getting just a little bit deeper into playgrounds. As it came up a couple of meetings ago, we started talking about playgrounds. So we started looking a little bit more into them and the feasibility of if we're able to add another playground, if we're not able to add another playground. Prior to any of that, a little background work had to be done. So that, that's kind of at the point we're at now and what I'm here to tell you a little bit about. The, I had the actual playground company that did the work with the carousels go ahead and price a playground for us. The, the, the instructions that I gave them was basically a playground that would accommodate what you would call one class, about thirty students. That playground was about fifty-two feet by eighty-two feet, which I believe is the same diameter as the current playground that's at the elementary school. And, and I'll show you a picture of what they designed in a minute. But it includes eight separate pieces of equipment. Inclusive of, inclusive of all costs was a hundred forty thousand dollars to be able to put that in. Something of that amount, you, we would have to go out to bid, a request for a proposal would go out and there's an entire process around the purchasing because of the amount for that. The next steps is we're going to have a playground committee that will come together. It will be the principal at the elementary school, Ms. Grisco, teachers, parents. We're going to ask Mr. Fai, the city council member, to be on there. I believe that we've mentioned, I've used him over the last couple of years to inspect the playgrounds. He is a certified playground inspector and the only other ones that I have been able to find around actually work for individual locality. So he's done us a favor in looking at that and identifying any hazards that we may have so kids don't get hurt or we can get things that corrected that may need to be corrected. That committee, we hope to use really to inform, you know, what do we need to do with the playground? Do we need to add pieces? Do we need to bring in a entirely new playground then? Just all of those questions to give us a little bit of direction to move forward. The problem that we run into is anything over fifty, fifty thousand dollars is going to be a part of our capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-four was, was submitted earlier this year. So anything that we would add would have to go on the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-five. And if you remember, those plans project out over a number of years. So what we'll have to look at is where in the capital improvement plan that will fall. Is it an immediate need? Is it something that if we're going to go with the whole playground, is it going to be further out? And the things that you have to consider is there are a lot of necessities that we have right now. We, we've got a high school and an elementary school that are having some heating and air issues. We've got a roof at the high school. All, all of that you have to look at and consider when you're looking at the capital improvement plan. So the playground is one piece of that, but a piece that we're working on to try to get a plan to see what we can do in the future. And the playground that I had priced out that was a hundred forty thousand was a turnkey cost. Just to give you an idea, that is the actual schematic that came from that and kind of what it would look at. The area that we gave them was to look at the rear of the school. That's all I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Ratliff. Ms. Spence, financial update?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, I'm in my old life. I'm pleased to present tonight an update on regarding the raises on the FY twenty-four budget. The, the school's FY twenty-four budget was based on, of course, the governor's budget, which included the five percent raises and a thousand dollar bonuses. Of course, that was prepared in February of this year. The state budget signed on September fourteenth funded an additional two percent raise for state-supported positions effective January first. Of course, the state budget did not include bonuses and therefore were not funded. The city, however, when they prepared their budget and funded the schools, included a seven percent compensatory increase, which was netted against the bonuses. So now that the state has an approved two percent raise and the state count tool has been received, staff will receive the following budgeted salary in January. A retroactive two percent pay from July first through December thirty-first. Also, the additional two percent pay in, for the month of January. And for future paychecks, additional two percent pay from January through June. The result for the PCPS staff is they, they will have received a seven percent compensatory increase for fiscal year twenty-four. So that'll be the net effect for the staff. In addition, the state has to fund their allocable share of the approved seven percent raises in future state budgets. We really couldn't pull the trigger until we knew that the state had the approved budget in September. We were waiting for that the whole time. So, and so we got the, the state count tool, we knew they had it and it was going to be funded in the future. And the city had already funded the seven percent for the full year. So I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Ms. First, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
I guess I have two. First is Kendra Ruga of eight forty-two Pecosin Avenue.
Would like to welcome, but I have to read my little, why not? But I got to read this. The Pecosin School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter, the disclosure, disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how we can respective, one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member or to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. And to follow school board policy, time allotted to speakers shall be three minutes.
I think I got. Thank you. That's a lot.
It's a lot.
I just wanted to talk, I was told I need to talk now and it's about one of the other matters for consideration, topic A, for PES and PPS carrying a smartwatch. Am I allowed to talk about something that brought me here that happened or?
As long as, as long as you're not talking about a student.
It's my kid.
I think it's okay.
It's just an example.
I think it's as long as, I'm sorry, as long as it's your, your child, I think it's okay.
Yeah, it, we just had two issues this week that brought me to look up the topic, which brought me to find the agenda and it just happened to work out Tuesday, which Parent Square I love because it's very on top of it. It's, I mean, it's very immediate. But we got notification the buses would be late for drop off. And then notification that, oh, nope, we're looking like we're on time and then they got there early. So I'm looking out my back door, I see through the woods, the bus has arrived and nobody is there to get my child because I'm at my house. So my husband runs to the bus stop and the bus driver let her off with our other neighbor. If she had stayed on, she had no communication with her because she didn't have her gizmo, which is not a very smart, smartwatch. It's pretty dumb, actually. But it was not with her at the time. And so the next day I said, don't forget your watch, not knowing the policy at the time. She's been wearing it almost every day since day one. Anyway, she gets home safe, it's fine. To Thursday, she's not feeling well, she doesn't communicate the best with that because it doesn't happen often. So she tells her teacher, I'm tired. She's, he says, go to the calm down corner, put your head down and see if that helps. So she called me on her watch. She said, mommy, I don't. She said, mommy, I don't feel good, I'm tired. I said, I'm on my way, because in my mind, that's her telling me what's wrong. And so I'm on my way, I get to the school, nobody has anything, knows what's going on. I said, my daughter called me, she's not feeling well. And then they brought her into the nurse's office. The nurse's office did their eval, she had a fever. And then they brought me in to tell me, no, 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 you can't do that. And I didn't know that policy. I said, if you could just clarify, can she carry it in her backpack because of the bus incident, blah, blah, blah. So the assistant principal called me the next day to clarify the policy, but then I saw this was on the agenda. So I guess I'm, I saw what was in the file enclosed about being able to keep it turned off and in the backpack while on school grounds or on the bus. But I guess my question is, if she has a not smart smartwatch, it's a gizmo, it only can call mommy, daddy, and 911, and I can track where she is, can she still wear that? Would there be consideration for them to be able to still wear that?
Ma'am, we've reached your three-minute limit.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
If I have a second topic, do I get another three minutes?
Next, I have Brandon Call of 13 Bayview Drive.
Got a timer this time, folks. So my name's Brandon Call, and we're here to talk about SEL again. Guys, first, I sincerely appreciate the administration presenting their thoughts on this at the last meeting, but I didn't find it very helpful that they didn't dive into many of the parents' real areas concerned regarding it. It's my opinion that it's become clear that this SEL process was either not properly vetted, or it was properly vetted, and none of the things we have concerns about were mentioned once vetted. Without going into the atrocious and heinous statements made by SEL and its creators, as well as its overtly stated goals, I would like to discuss some places that the former presentation was unsatisfactory. We were told that it is not a political thing, which is absurd on its face, because all of the ideologies SEL supports lie firmly on one side of the aisle. That's the side that supports overt racism, gender theories, Marxism, and CRT. These examples were supported last time I spoke and can be easily fact-checked. SEL is interwoven and cannot be removed, we were told, but when we asked about the discipline piece of SEL, we were told that was removed. We were told that CRT is not taught because it's awful and has no place in school, correct. We were told that like most education packages, it is a toolkit that we can pick and choose from, and that no one can read it all or know it all. So obviously, we can very easily remove it, especially if the board votes to do so. We heard a lot of it being about stuff we have always done. In fact, most of the top-level explanations we were given were so banal that they could have been anything. So if it truly is something we have always done, then why not get rid of the added controversial piece and focus simply on education and not social movements? We were told this is not a Castle program. They laughed and said, who's Castle? That is in fact collaborative classrooms, which is true. It was developed from the Castle model, with Castle's help, citing the same sources to include Castle. It was approved by Castle, and it has the highest award and rating from Castle for ideological alignment. How can we pretend they are not connected to hip? School board, we are asking you to vote this out of Bekoson Public Schools. If you are on the fence about this and you have questions, please let me know. I have every source and citation you can possibly need to answer your questions about it. Now, if you feel that I'm a radical and that I'm just full of smoke, then maybe we could have the administrators answer direct public questions from the community to maybe help us understand the things we don't understand, and maybe get them on the record for what their feelings about this are. I have 20 seconds. Last time I promised you guys a funny joke about Greeks. A Greek guy with a pair of ripped pants walk into a tailor, and he points to the tailor, and he says, "Eumenides." And the tailor points back at him and says, "Euripides." I got 15 seconds.
Dr. Burbage, consent agenda?
Yes, for tonight's consent agenda, Item A is approval of financial reports. Item B is authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request. Item C is approval of personnel action. Item D is approval of minutes for October's regular meeting, work session, and November 1 work session and closed meeting. Item E is approval to authorize the superintendent to sign a contract for lawn maintenance services with Home Turf Landscaping for the 2024-2025 school year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So the lawn care, I know before we had graduated students that were doing that. What happened to that?
Yeah, we went down that road and really tried to promote part-time employees. We did have a couple of students who did some part-time work for us over the summer, but it was just, we realized it was too big a job to try to get part-time labor to do that. It was a good idea, it just didn't work. So we're back to lawn care services and have been now for almost two years.
Ball for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
Other matters for consideration? Consideration of addition of a provision for students at PES to carry a smartwatch. There.
I'd like to make a motion regarding Item A, that we table that for consideration to sort of figure out how this is going to work.
As far as what, like what?
Some of the unintended consequences, I would like to... I'd like to know how it's going to work. What are some of the positives? I haven't discussed those matters. I haven't had two work sessions so far.
How many more are we going to do?
Well, I feel that there, you know, like there are some things that we haven't discussed in regards to some of the... Basically, you know, I'd like to basically bring some law enforcement in to kind of talk about some of the ins and outs of the social...
Yeah, the tracking of the applications and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah, some of the security stuff. I don't, I'm not a technical person, you know, I can barely get myself on the work.
Oh, we're not worried about that in middle school and high school? We just want to know the tracking?
We're talking about kindergarten through 5th grade.
Devices that parents bought them, and worried about the tracking part of it?
We're asking kindergarten through 5th grade kids.
We're not asking them to do it, their parents might, can choose if they want to do it or not. That's why I just, I'm trying to figure out where the hard middle part is when a parent's decision is to put this in a backpack for a kid to have it if they get dropped off at the wrong location or anything else. Or are we going to do it, well, it's our responsibility? It's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to say if they can bring it, to have it if they need it. And like he said, this is two times that we've talked about it. Are we going to definitely have it on the next one, no matter what, a vote? Is that where we're going with this, or are we going to keep punting it because of that fail? We talked about this when the shootings happened, unfortunately, and then we talked about it when the power went out and kids got sent home and some parents weren't there. We've talked about it when two or three kids have been dropped off at the wrong bus stop, got on the wrong bus, and now we're going to look at it again. So as long as it's next month, I'm okay with it. Or we can vote, and y'all can say no, and we'll be okay with it then, too. I just feel this has been a long time with the examples that just showed how long we've talked about it, and how much longer do we want to talk about it?
Is there a second for the motion to table? So to put some framework in the discussion around that, I think we have a work session, or we will have a work session in two weeks' time. We could put it on the agenda there and then bring it to the December meeting.
So you did a work session last month, we do a work session again, and then it'll be on the next time?
Correct.
So after the work session, we can choose to vote for it if we want to?
I don't think we can vote at a work session.
No, after, like, we can have a special call meeting after the work session, as long as it's publicized first.
Yeah, well, I think, okay.
If I could just make a point just to clarify the calendar, we have this unusual situation between Thanksgiving and the holidays. We only have less than two weeks after the holiday before our next meeting, so I would just offer a suggestion, if you do want to reconsider this at that point, that you schedule a session after that meeting or before that meeting, associated with that meeting, to do whatever work you want to do on this topic there before we go into the holidays, since we just, again, only have less than three weeks between now and our next meeting.
And that session can be just the people who want to go there to, who want to table it, and then we'll just vote on it the next meeting that we have, unless we table it again.
I think it would be at our work session for everybody, for all of us.
So we'll have one in two weeks?
That's been our cadence, so.
Yeah, I would just suggest it's to try to do a work session and then a meeting within less than two, less than three weeks, if you could combine it with that meeting, so that you have a work session and that meeting at the same time, so you can meet, discuss it, and vote. You have discussed this topic multiple times, so, I mean, I...
But we would vote after the school board meeting, in the meeting over there before we went home in December.
That's what I was suggesting, but again, that's, I just threw it out to consider the calendar. You have been talking about work sessions between meetings, and this is going to be fairly difficult to schedule with only a little over two and a half weeks between now and the next school board meeting.
Our school board meeting is December the 12th. Okay. So we could do a work session before the school board meeting on the 12th?
I can't get here before 6:00. But y'all can, I mean, I don't need another school board, y'all can discuss what you need to discuss. I mean, I just want to vote, I mean, that's where we're going to, and so at some point, it's going to get to that point, and...
So my issues are mostly related to privacy concerns, and how do we, like, you may be okay with a child bringing a smartwatch or whatever, but I need better understanding about how they work, what are their privacy concerns? Given some of the things that have happened in the past with smart devices and social media, and it's, there's a cellphone associated with that smartwatch, correct?
No.
The way to take pictures or take audio or anything like that?
Well, I think it depends on the smartwatch.
Yeah, I mean, are we going to?
And we had talked about if we could choose which smartwatches that kids could wear and...
That's my concern.
Yeah, and I think we determined that we can't do that, that we can't have a list, right? We had talked about that.
I don't remember, I remember a brief discussion of that, but I do not recall that we made a determination or that anybody came back with us, to us with a determination on whether we could limit the devices or not. I think trying to administratively cover that, I think, would be challenging, to say, oh, you have an acceptable watch, you don't have an acceptable watch.
Trusting a 5th grader and trusting a 6th grader is just that much more that we have to focus on it.
Well, no, but trusting a kindergartner and trusting a 6th grader are very different.
You shouldn't have it out. I mean, that's part of this process, but yeah, that's right, we've already discussed it, we'll discuss it again.
Can, Ms. Firth, can you please call for the vote?
Chair, Mr. Ingram?
What are we voting on?
I'm sorry, we're...
Table?
Table.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Nay.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 5-2.
Thank you. Consideration of the revision to the student code of conduct to include specific language regarding the discipline of students with disabilities, is there a motion?
I move to approve the code of conduct additions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it was corrected. It said, uh...
Williamsburg School or whatever.
It was corrected.
Okay, no further discussion. Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of the PCPS All-In Virginia Spending Plan, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of broadcasting board work sessions in 2024?
I make a motion we consider broadcasting board work sessions in 2024.
Can we do it earlier than that or no? Oh, so is it going to be the 2024 school year, or is it going to start in January?
I don't think we know the answer to that yet. I think that there are other considerations that have to be made for it to be implemented, but I think that this is the start of the implementation plan. I don't think we can give you a date today of when we can operationalize it, if that is the vote.
Do we want, okay, do we want to vote when we can have a date to say when we're going to initiate instead of vote for a just point date of 2024?
I think it's important that we, that we act... Idea of broadcasting them, and then we need to work through the logistics of actually doing it, but it's important that we actually say that we're actually broadcasting.
It is important to do it, we just have to work through the process.
I don't think it's as simple as it seems. I think we have to work through the logistics. There are a lot of people that work through this publication process to make this happen appropriately and correctly, to follow the guidelines of mandated availability, and it's not as simple as somebody can have a device and record it from our perspective.
So we want to vote on this, but we're not sure how easy it is and if we're going to be able to implement it? Is that what you're saying now, that this, I mean, that might not be able to implement it?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it's going to take some time for, I think we need to give ourselves time to logistically figure out how to make it happen and make it happen appropriately.
Well, we can make it happen in 2024, we feel?
I believe that's true, yes.
I second it.
Any other discussion? Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is 7-0.
And consideration of the approval of superintendent's request to city council for use of carryover funds, is there a motion?
I have a question on it.
Well, we do a motion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now discussion?
So we are phoned to approve stipends for the sped teachers, paralegals, and crossing guards from the carryover funds for all these positions.
There are educators.
There are educators, sorry. I feel these are hard to hire and retain positions, and there needs to be stipends, of course, but is there any way we can maybe see some kind of Christmas bonus or something for the other teachers that helped with covering this, or is that something we cannot, with these carryover funds, see what we can do? It can be something small, anything.
Here's, kind of the short and dirty on that. You all will remember from a work session, this came up to discuss a sped stipend due to a lot of feedback we were getting and the, kind of the elephant in the room, we're trying to recruit and hire sped teachers as we speak from vacancies we have, and they're just not available. We, at your request, we surveyed several other school divisions and found that most of them had delineated some sort of a stipend payment to teachers who teach students of special needs. And so your kind of informal directive was, let's put that together and try to do it this time, this year, using vacancy savings, which is the only thing we have access to for now, and then talk about it during the budget process moving forward. So we did that, you all agreed on a, an amount in that work session, we went from those minutes, and have... and have started that process. There's not any additional money. We operate on a pretty tight budget, and what's, what's available to us is a pocket of anticipated vacancy savings, and what that means basically is if we're advertising for a teacher, or in case of, let's say, a school psychologist we've been advertising for for almost two years, that money during a fiscal year accumulates because we have the position and the money funded, but we don't actually hire the person. So as that accumulates, we can access that money during that year, and Virginia has an unusual code, and most of you are familiar with this, unlike a lot of other school systems or other states, where school systems can't retain money from year to year. So on June 30th, all money that is not spent reverts back to the taxing authority, in this case, the city, and annually, we make a request after the audit is done to ask for that money back, to do things that either we couldn't spend the money for during that year, like in case in point, the literacy package that we had budgeted for last year, we didn't get the vetted materials until weeks ago, so we, we had to ask the city, we're going to carry that money over, and then we need you to give it back to us when we can actually buy it. So, just several examples of that. So the long answer to the short question, we don't have access to any other funds to do that. In addition, you'll recall, we are using some of that money to pay the retroactive 2% that our teachers, because the state money didn't originate until January. So we are paying retroactively the additional 2%, which the teachers will all get in their January paycheck, which will feel like a supplement.
So out of that 1.273 million, we're paying that to their 2% back, or is that-
No, no, there's a whole list of things. On your, on your packet there, you'll see all of the things that we're doing to spend that money.
And I was just wondering, instead of funding something, is there any way we can look to, I mean, even something small, gift card or something small, out of all that money, is there something we could do? I didn't know if there was or not. That's why I was wondering, before we vote on this, that was my question.
I mean, we could, if there's something on that list that you think we can, can move, some of those things are pretty definitive. The two curriculum needs are already priced, and we, that money was already budgeted by this board in last fiscal year, and we carried it over so that we could purchase those items this year, because they, the list was not available from VDOE as to what items we could purchase last year. The other items on there are, there's a fire system that, that has gone bad at one of the schools, that's kind of an urgent need. We don't have the money in our maintenance budget to cover that, so those are the kinds of things we ask for in carryover, and I'm not looking at the list now, but there's several other items that are, um, yeah, now that is, that's a, a big ticket item that the city is going to actually hold at this point. That's a moving target, to kind of get in the weeds on that. Every year, we anticipate what our enrollment's going to be, and it's typically flat, has been for many, many years. So the guesswork to predicting the ADM number, average daily membership number, is pretty easy, easily done. This year, you'll recall, and you guys were involved in this conversation, we contracted with Weldon Cooper, the state demographers, because we have three new developments in Pecosin, first time in many, many years. So we anticipate a significant enrollment, and to try to figure out how many kids that's going to yield for us in this fiscal year, because if you'll recall, we have to predict the number, and the state funds that number, but if we don't get that number, we have to give it back. So this is, this, we've asked the city to hold that money for us, to, right now, our numbers are not climbing like we predicted. We predicted an additional 50 students from the three developments this school year. That was from the research done by the state demographers. We also met with the city planning department and the major developer, developer over here at Legacy, and that's where that 50-student number came from. Well, each of those students is almost $8,000 of state funding, so that's where that number comes from. Right now, we're about 40 kids short from that, from that prediction. Will we get them between now and the end of the year? By March 20th, which is the magic date? We think so, but we're not sure, and what we don't want to do is have, we can't run in the rears, so if we don't receive those additional students, we're going to pay that money back. Does that make sense? So, it's, it's really risky to spend any of that money at this point. Now, it would be, I think, wiser to look toward the end of the year if there is carryover funds. We can always, your option is always to look at carryover funding and prioritize whether you want to earmark some of that for a bonus. One-time bonus is something you can always do if there's money in the system to do that. Right now, it's real tight, and I think it would be a challenge to, to issue a bonus at this time, or I would have recommended it.
We have about 200 employees, you think, 250?
It's closer to 300.
300? So if we did, if we knew $50, it'd be 1,500, plus the taxes, would be about 2,000, and something small, wouldn't that about the numbers, if I'm not a math person?
And again, I'm not knocking a $50 gift or a $100 gift, but after taxes, it's, it's probably, yeah.
Forty, that's, I put about 30, 40% on it, that's what I went for.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, and that's something for discussion. I'm not sure, I'd rather come back to you with some actual numbers and be able to talk about that in a, in a wiser way.
We can put it on our work session agenda. I think that, that was an idea that I thought about, too. Maybe it's a different option we can consider, so. All right?
So, do we want to vote no on this, and then come back and table it? Like, what-
Is that 571, that could be three or four thousand out of that to give us a chance to talk about, instead of saying, hey, we're appropriating that 571,875 before we can look into it to see if we can do something?
I don't think we can do it outside the carryover funds. They need to-
The carryover funds, can we?
You can. We, I strongly encourage you to not mess around with the carryover funds. Those are pretty tightly calculated, and we really need to, that money, for example, that larger piece there is, is not even going to be issued to us until we know our March 20 numbers. So, the other pieces are pretty specific, how much they cost, and I just don't think you have a lot of wiggle room in that. I would strongly recommend that you approve the carryover funding, and then, you know, you can go in a work session and look at anticipated vacancy savings for this year, and start thinking about how to do that, because, again, the reason that there's carryover funds is because of vacancy savings. Those vacancy savings are happening as we speak, too, but, you know, we're also trying to hire all of those positions.
Hire one, lose one.
We also don't want to get in a situation where you have somebody to hire and you don't have the funds.
Okay. We have a second. So, Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote? Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Nay.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-one.
Thank you. Are there any communications in or other matters, oh, by the school, or at Thatcher?
Um, starting with the primary school. At PPS, we are thankful for many things. We are thankful for our teachers and staff, who this month have provided excellent quality instruction. Here's a few things we have learned this month at PPS. Kindergarten students are learning about the Pecosin community, the story of Thanksgiving, counting, reading, and writing numbers up to 30, and disguising turkeys from the Thanksgiving dinner table. First graders learned about Veterans Day and symbols to celebrate that holiday, skip counting by twos, fives, and tens to 100, and you should ask kids about the Floss Rule, which you're, which the first graders are currently learning about. Second grade continues to add new vocabulary through daily read aloud stories, and are asking open-ended questions, and have, and have begun to create habitat projects to support the learning of different types of habitats. We are thankful for our reading and math specialists, coaches, and other staff for providing interventions for students in need of extra skill practice. Intervention sessions for reading and math began this month. Students are also getting needed reinforcement in the classroom during dedicated intervention time with classroom teachers. We are thankful to Officer Pete, who keeps our building safe, and who began DARE lessons with our second graders this month. These lessons are on safety in school, at home, and in the community. We are thankful to our counselor and to the school board office for working on our application for Purple Star recognition once again. We are thankful for PHS students who are supporting our children with students coming over from the teacher cadet class as special friends, and on Fun Fridays for Arrival Time. We are thankful to our PEF, who awarded several grants to teachers at PPS. The money from these grants will go to enhance the daily instruction in the classrooms with materials and resources. We are thankful for our families, who continue to pour in their time and talents into our building. Our PTO sponsored a Read-A-Thon at the start of the month, volunteer to serve on the school and division's VTSS teams and communities, have, have worked to grace our hallways and classrooms with increasingly representative multimedia, and continuously strive to meet staff needs. Our parents and grandparents also continue to come into our buildings every day as reading buddies, mystery readers, and helping hands. This morning, our families and kindergarten staff held another wonderfully successful kindergarten Thanksgiving feast. And finally, we are thankful to the school board for supporting what is best for students. We wish a blessed Thanksgiving holiday to all. Now for the elementary school. Pecosin Elementary School is thankful for the upcoming Thanksgiving break to spend well-deserved time with family and friends. Our students and staff have been working so hard in their lessons, and we are proud of what has been accomplished so far. Our volunteer coordinator is working through applications and providing training to schedule volunteers for our lunch and recess times. We recently hosted our students' veteran family members for a special breakfast to thank them for their service. We are also thankful for our parents, who have made time to speak with their child's teachers during our parent-teacher conference window. We are excited to host our Fall Book Fair upon return from Thanksgiving break, and encourage our students and their families to come out to our Family Night on November 30th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Our fifth graders will be taking their first field trip of the year in early December, and our fourth graders are receiving their musical recorder instruments very soon. We know our fourth-grade parents will appreciate the exciting sounds of the quarters as they listen to their children practice. Just a reminder to all of our parents, check Parent Square for weekly newsletter posts from teachers, and important reminders from the school and division officers. Thank you for supporting Pecosin Elementary School. And for the middle school, elections for student council association officers have been held, and homeroom representatives have been elected for the 23-24 school year. SCA is now highly engaged at PMS. Our eighth-grade students went on a field trip to Washington, DC yesterday and had a great time. Our media center is excited to be hosting the PMS Bedford Book Fair in the library next week. Book Fair Family Night is Thursday, November 30th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the PMS Media Center. We hope to see all of our families there. Pecosin Middle School was awarded $2,101 in, in grants from the Pecosin Education Foundation. Their support is truly appreciated and makes such a difference. PMS is proud to announce that 11 of our students were selected to the District Eight Middle School Chorus. These students will perform at CNU with other district chorus delegates on Saturday, February 10th. PMS would also like to congratulate our November Golden Bowl Student of the Month, Elizabeth Alsbrook for sixth grade, Kendall Angelica for seventh grade, and Hunter Smoker for eighth grade. Our band and chorus students are busy preparing for winter concerts in December, and we hope to have you, you have the opportunity to come and enjoy these concerts, and hear how hard their work is paying off. And they sound fantastic, and wish you all a good Thanksgiving. And now for the high school, we'd like to congratulate, try and congratulate all of our students on their recent taking of the PSAT for sophomores and some juniors. That is always good to hear, and we would like to give hopes to those who are taking the SAT, which would be on December 2nd. That is a very large deal for our students. I would, we would like to congratulate our football team, who won last Friday and are going to the regional finals against Amelia County this Friday. We hope that everyone can make it out and show their Pecosin support. It really means a lot to the team and everyone there, and hopefully, we can bring the trophy home, put another one in the case, always love that. Our AP Psych, Psychology, and Intro to Health and Med got a visit by Dr. Michael McCarthy, who told them about the psychology behind sports injuries and the psychology of sports, which was a great lesson for them, and we very much so appreciate Dr. Michael McCarthy for coming out and talking to our students. The Chick-fil-A Leadership Club was visited by our local owner of our Chick-fil-A on Victory Boulevard, and was, did a presentation on what really, what it really means to be a leader, and how we can be leaders in our community, which is a great quality we strive for in our students. And as mentioned in the, in the PPS report, the Friday Fun Squad, we had Pecosin High School students, particularly the band and the cheerleading squad, come out and greet PPS students, and start their day off with a smile, which we always love, and keep an update on Parent Square for the latest news, and we would like to thank you all, and have a great holiday break. Thank you.
Thatcher. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the Senior of the Month, Ella Clark, and want to thank all the, the staff that were involved in us receiving the Purple Star. Thank you for the hard work, and want to thank the Wildman family for donating the drawings to us. That's pretty awesome right there. And, Madam Chair, Pecosin City Public Schools is a unique school system. While we compare ourselves to other school districts for issues at hand, we have always maintained a tradition of excellence, a tradition of excellence that would not be possible without our teachers, staff, students, and parents. We were one of the first school districts in the state to open our doors during the statewide lockdown. When all the other schools in Hampton Roads closed their doors to an impending snowstorm, we left ours open for a day of productive learning. When we had the opportunity to remove masks, we were the first in the state to remove them and keep them off. I could go on and on about how we overcame the odds. We are now faced with another challenge of maintaining the excellence for so long we have prided ourselves on. We must make a choice if we want PCPS to continue its uniqueness, or subscribe to the same program framework as all the other school districts in the state, and our nation, in other words, become a mainstream school district. I've been told many times during debate and in public, we can do better than this. This is our chance as a school division to do better and continue our tradition of excellence. Virginia Code 22.1-17.7 states the Virginia Board of Education makes standards available so school divisions may adopt them. It does not state, "School boards must adopt these standards." I make a motion to strike all words from the Pecosin City Public Schools Policy 6-3.4 and other social-emotional learning policies approved by the board. It was modified due to House Bill 753 in 2020 and subsequent Virginia Code 22.1-17.7, and replaced with the following, and I can read it if you want me to.
That's the draft?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Just in a general sense, I do not believe that making a immediate vote on a policy change is a wise decision for us at this immediate moment, without fully understanding what the policy does, what the policy change does, and its implications from a legal standpoint.
Is everything from 6-3.4 just added in, removal of sale?
I understand, but, you know, we have-
We don't have to follow sale. It's, it's not a-
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we have counsel on staff, or retained counsel on purpose, and to ensure that we don't break the law. And, in my opinion, they need to be consulted, turn around and make a policy change to our policy. That's very, very, very typical for any organization, especially a public body such as ourselves.
Okay, so-
In some of the, again, the chance to draft or whatever that, but some of my concerns with whatever from the last presentation really was centered around, my, my perspective, it looks more like a innovative experiment or something like that, as far as, you know, you have, getting it, some are not getting it, there's data collected, there's generalization to make around it, so, didn't go under an IRB approval, didn't go for approval or anything like that. So there's still, I think there's, to, you know, Chris's point, but there's still things to talk about, hash out, and figure out, when does a program have to meet those parameters, right? When do they not meet those parameters? I was left more, with more questions after the work session than questions answered, on how it was, how-
Pilot program, how can- Pilot program, how can parents say, "I don't want to be part of a pilot program," and other ones, some are and some aren't, I just, I've got, would like to know a little bit more too, what some teachers are doing and some teachers are not, how do we pick who's kids are there and whose are not, and is it the parents' right to say, "I don't want to be part of a program that you're trialing on my kid?" And so, I've got that concern too.
Without having the previous draft and side-by-side how we normally would go through the process through a work session, you know, I, I think that's the process that Mr. DeBose is referring to. You know, we, we have a methodology for how we change our policies, and we typically, you know, discuss it, do side-by-side comparison, discuss with the lawyer if we need to, if there's verbiage, especially when it's in relation to state law. So, I think that's what Mr. DeBose is talking about.
Okay. So, we were told to keep God and prayer out of schools. Yet Castle's framework includes inner resilience program whose mission is to cultivate the inner lives of students, teachers, and schools by integrating social and emotional learning with contemplative practice. And that's from the Dalai Lama Center dot org. So, they, they highlighted the, uh, the lady that's in the resilience program. Eileen Rockefeller is the co-founder of Castle. She's also the granddaughter of John D. Rockefeller, the same John D. Rockefeller who said, "I don't want a nation of thinkers, I want a nation of workers." So, you know, this whole thing about sell, it's, it's so political and radical, I don't even know why we're, we're not even entertaining this. Here's another one. The, uh, there was a research paper by Stephanie Fontana, "Permeating the Human Psyche: The Role of Emotions in Nazi Propaganda." This paper focuses specifically on targeted audiences such as, and among other groups, German youth, who were more susceptible to emotional manipulation. By triggering emotions of fear, hatred, national esteem, belonging, humiliation, and loss, the Nazi Party were able to garner ardent devotion to the regime. This was under emotional learning. National Socialism promoted the idea of a united Germany identity that moved beyond the bounds of previous ideologies, doctrines, and class divisions. Natural, or National Socialism found insightful ways of achieving inclusivity to create a feeling that each person was a chief and valued member of the regime. From the 1920s, German youth became the target audience for Nazi propaganda. Writing in Mein Kampf, Hitler expressed, "Whoever has the youth has the future." These aren't from conspiracy theory websites. These, these are, uh, ones from Science Direct correlating social-emotional learning to critical race theory.
So, when we've talked about this, we've said SEL has been in our schools for a long time. So, caring school community doesn't need to be there now. So, if we do want to do a comparison, can we stop it until we do the comparison and put a vote to stop caring school community because SEL is already in there? So, we've already met the requirement from what John said, we've just added this extra...
There's a motion on the table.
Yeah, that's why I'm just asking when, yeah, discussion the motion.
I don't, as I said, I don't know that this, what you're proposing, parent schools and communities, out of their, out of their purview to teach if they wanted to. I don't, not even mentioned, rebate them in here. I mean, I give a prefer to Castle, but somebody could say, "Well, it was not a Castle thing, it was only approved by Castle."
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, any program approved by Castle. I can find the language for it.
I can, I mean, I can, I can say right now, I'm not prepared to vote on a policy without understanding implications of the policy change. You know, I'm not trying to make a political statement, not trying to make anything along those lines, I just want to understand the policy change and how that policy change reflects law.
I want to substitute the motion to pause it until we're able to discuss it and come to a final resolution.
Pause caring school community until we discuss this?
Pause all social-emotional learning until...
So, they're using caring right now, and so we would stop it. But what about the kids that are actually benefiting from it? They regress?
Did we have SEL before caring schools?
We did.
And so, and it did fine all the way until...
We had anti-bullying, right?
Uh, SEL. Because we...
Social-emotional learning is, uh, not a formal program. It's, it's the process of helping kids grow socially and emotionally. Schools have been doing that, as we presented in a very thorough workshop, for my whole career and probably before that. Anti-bullying programs are part of social-emotional learning because you teach kids not to hurt each other by teaching them how to engage in their world socially and emotionally in an effective, healthy way. This is, um, not rocket science. It's, it, but it's very important learning that schools have been doing forever. What we shared with you in great detail at, at that work session was that, um, our teachers were asking for support in how to do this in an effective way. We provide them curriculum and everything else that they do, and we, um, put a committee together to vet options out there to support teachers in providing social-emotional learning and education for our kids, which again, we've been doing for years with ad hoc programming. Um, that's the short answer to that question. Yes, we've been doing social-emotional learning. Teachers and schools have been doing this forever, um, in a lot of different creative ways. Um, I, the, the caring schools curriculum that, that was, um, vetted was one that was vetted to provide a toolkit for teachers to have activities and resources. You heard tonight from, for example, from WHRO, one of the things that they do is they build curriculum for all kinds of things. Um, school systems all over the country are using pieces of their curriculum, toolkits. Um, that's, our teachers are using some of those same things. Um, that's all caring schools community is. We've opened it up to ask anybody to look at it, if there's something in there that's objectionable in those activities and lessons. Um, you know, we can vet out any particular pieces as we have done with every curriculum that we choose. We will vet out math lessons that we don't like for one reason or another. Um, that's all I, I know, that's the only way I know how to answer that. Yes, the short answer is SEL is, uh, has been part of the integrated, uh, learning for schools for as long as I can remember. Anti-bullying is just one piece of that because that's, um, kids don't bully, um, if they learn how to manage their environment in a healthy, social, emotional way.
Technically, we do not need the caring, we're using it, but we don't have to because we've had it in our system for long before. So, we've hit the requirement from the Department of Education without that. Because you said we've been doing it for years.
I think what I remember was this was a standard way, so we understood how it was being taught. Whereas before, they were incorporated based on how CJ, you know, how Mr. Childress wanted his, how Dr. Goodell wanted to, you know, in my class, this is how I do it. And I think that was part of why we provide, it's why we provide a curriculum for math, it's why we provide a curriculum for English. We've learned over time that if you let, without guidance, it can be anything. Without a curriculum, I can put anything in front of anybody, I can go on to Google and say, "Give me a math lesson," and it'll give me the math lesson, but it doesn't meet the standard. It doesn't meet the expectation, and I think that, to bring it home, to bring it back to the point that Mr. DeBose brought up initially, is we have to make sure that we have met the law with the new draft policy, which is the motion that we have. And the motion that we have is this draft policy that has been seconded. So, this is what we have to take action on right now, is this draft policy that we haven't reviewed, that we haven't compared to our current policy, that we don't know, that we haven't vetted through the attorney, which are things that we typically do as we change policy.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, uh, pause caring schools curriculum until we've had a chance to, uh, come to a consideration as a board.
Are you removing your motion then?
I removed my previous motion.
All right, so the draft policy motion is removed from the table.
And it's going to be on the next work session, right?
And we will add that to the next work session.
So, then how...
Now, there's a second motion?
Just pause. I can't...
Discussion?
And that is to pause until we come to a determination on the draft policy language.
If there's something else we want to do with talking to the lawyer.
So, what things are going to be taken out of the classroom if we vote for this?
I mean, for one, they can start, uh, learning science and social studies again, the, the kindergartners. I mean, that's a good start right there.
I mean, like, so how, so this, I guess the question is, it's like across K through 5, I believe?
Yeah.
Some teachers, some teachers won't have to do anything from what we saw now, there's like four, five...
Every classroom has it.
So, the other classrooms are finding ways of doing this without, and other ones have to do it.
The morning meeting is going to have to use a different...
We still have the morning meeting.
I'm saying, the morning meeting is going to have to use a different resource than the caring schools.
So, the teachers that need to go find a different, whatever resource they can find, without any kind of...
Or they can read, they can use what they used all the other year.
So, is these other classrooms, those teachers have unlimited amounts, whatever they're doing, and we're not watching them, but it's only these five that we're worried about if they're going to go grab whatever they want, the other six or seven are grabbing whatever they want and we're okay with it? It just, it seems like there's a split where half, half the classrooms doing this and half the other classes are doing this.
May I make a comment? I'm sorry, may I make a comment? So, I hear you saying do what they've done for past years, just as you know, and Ms. Grisco's in here, but in other years, teachers asked for something to help them address the needs. And so, one of the things that they have used before was Second Step, a Castle-approved program.
Just sell again, yeah.
It's been in our schools, but we were trying to be transparent and let you all know that this is something that we're bringing in to share it with you, but it's already been in our schools for years. So, just something to think about.
So, that's a good point. Um, so we have behavior problems in our school.
And has it, has it helped? Because I mean, apparently, um, discipline has gone up as well, we're using sell, right? The, the caring schools.
What would the implications be if it's stopped?
Well, I mean, you have classroom rules, you know, share, be kind, the, the stuff we were taught when we were kids, right? And I mean, is that not taught in classrooms?
My step, so what are the other teachers doing? Are they just letting discipline go to what they want to do? And so, that's where it's just like half of them, some of them are doing it and some of them are not.
I think that was the purpose of the pilot, and I think that's what's been presented both times we've had presentations about sell, and that's why there's not, it...
So, one of my concerns is if my kid was part of a pilot, I should get to say okay or nay, and I should be either in the controlled or the experimental. I shouldn't have to just say, "Well, it is what it is, and you're in this group." If we're going to do a pilot, we should at least let parents know and let them have the opportunity to say yes or no for their kids. I know some of the people might not feel that way, but that was my biggest concern with this is, it is a pilot and what we're comparing to and we're making it where they have to be.
I guess the other option though, CJ, is the way that most school divisions, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if I haven't, if I'm misremembering, but I think what I remember from previous meetings is curriculum adoption happens and it goes to every teacher, and there is no pilot. And so, in this instance, what we did was we said, "Okay, we're not going to put it out there for everybody, we're going to have a select number, and we're going to put it out there, and we're going to see how it goes." I think that was the purpose of the pilot. But the way that, because the way that I understand curriculum usually launches is we adopt the curriculum and, which we do not do, they do. They adopt the curriculum, they implement it, and there is no...
We approve the textbook.
There is, there is no, there is no, there is no pilot, there is no...
And the rollout, I guess, is, is for me, and that's only me, now that we're talking about here, is what I didn't, I think we could have done a better job of rolling something out. We could have had more parents into that program instead of saying the parents are the counselors, that are the ones voting, instead of having actual parents into there. We could have had a, more of a group or someone from the school board could have been in that group when we did the discussions with the teachers. We could have had more input, where we don't make a decision, but it would make us feel better about the way it was rolled out.
I agree.
It would have been better. And so, since it wasn't rolled out correctly, oh, it was still rolled out correctly in some eyes, but might not be rolled out correctly in others, that's my biggest concern is how we did this one, and we need to learn from it. And if that's pausing it to try figuring out how to do a better job, I'm all for it. And that's my biggest concern, but, I mean, I'm not the one putting the motion out, but that's what my concern is. I don't know if their concerns are different, but if you ask me my concern, that's my biggest concern on how we did it.
So, in high school land...
Ms. Brown's presentation from the last meeting, um, what I recall is that, um, oh, I lost my train of thought. Um, what were you, what were you talking about?
I was just going to say, in high school land, um, I feel like you are, um, coming back to the word pilot and piloting a program and piloting it's experimental, however, in education. For example, College Board, AP Precalculus, new course coming onboard. So, what they do is they pilot the first course. So, students are able, some school divisions sign up, they're like, "Yeah, we'd love to teach AP Precalculus in our school division." Okay, students sign up to take it, and what they do is they gather some data from a small group. They look at the data and say, data in the sense of qualitative. I've heard a lot tonight about, um, you know, keeping this data and, you know, what are we doing, IRB approval and stuff. Hey, guys, this is, we're looking at students and saying, "Hey, are they kind, what are, how was that interaction in our class?" No data is put into a system, no data is put into any type of, I'm sorry, Mr. Childress, where were you?
I was, you were talking about data.
What's DESA?
You said something, I apologize. So, um...
Yeah, what, what is DESA? DESA, D-E-S-S-A.
So, DESA is the form, and I am, it is a screener, I'm not as good, could you?
So, DESA is just a screener that our teachers are using to help get a, uh, kind of a glimpse of how students are doing in certain areas, like, um, maybe something they are related to, they, they go oriented, they take personal responsibility or actions. And then based on those, we don't send those scores out there, but we look at where are there students that have need in any of those areas, and that's how we utilize our counselor to do small groups, to work in friendship groups or to work on certain goals within the basis of those different areas that DESA identifies. And it's just a screener for us.
And how long have we been using DESA in Picocet City Public Schools?
Then this is probably year...
2019? Yeah.
The precal...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So...
Just...
Yeah, because I noticed there's a login on, on the PCPS website for DESA, and I'm just wondering how that data gets, you know, calculated and stuff.
We keep student information, like teachers jot things down, it's not that it goes external, it stays within PCPS.
Aperture, ApertureEd, ApertureEd.com, it goes there, there's a login for it.
I will get more information on that from you.
And like the AP program you talked about, students sign up for it. Great. I mean, they get to choose to go into that pilot program.
College Board has to get IRB approval to do all that stuff too.
Let me just speak to pilot. I think there is a misnomer about what, what pilot means. It, it sounds like an experimental program, and I know that would, would cause someone to think that. And it, when we pilot programs in education, again, this is nothing new, we typically pilot first. What we're really doing is, is selecting a group of teachers who agree to utilize a particular tool, to try the tool out. It's not, uh, experimenting on the children, it's more or less the teachers learning a tool to try out, to see if this is a tool they want to use. Teachers always do this. The, the difference in a formal pilot and an informal pilot is a lot of teachers pick something on the internet and pilot it. They just try this thing out, and you wouldn't have any idea that your kids are in a pilot program. They've pulled something off of who knows where and used it, and teachers all over the country do that every day. And the difference in a formal pilot, which is the way we recommend to do business, is we, uh, garner a group of, of teachers who are willing to try out a particular, uh, tool or resource and, and vet it. And is this something that works for, for my class or not? And it's a smart way to do it. Teachers appreciate the opportunity. Um, teachers appreciate the opportunity to have access to vetted programs that they can use in all subject areas. Um, that's what that is. It, it, I, I can understand the confusion or misunderstanding that there's, that, that we're experimenting with children. We're experimenting with, with a tool, a resource that we have provided for teachers to use, and we have always done that, and we will do it again, uh, with the Literacy Act, we'll do it again with the math curriculum that's coming up. We're going to provide a body of, of resources. My Open Math, a great math resource that some of our teachers use, I recommend it, it's a really good math tool. Do all of our teachers use it? No, just some teachers. But those teachers are piloting the use of that tool to teach mathematics. It, it, there's no real difference. I don't, I just don't, I want to clarify, don't get hung up on the word pilot. It sounds like that's a, that's a stumbling block for somebody in this process. And again, I'm not trying to weigh in one way or the other about your philosophies in this or, or ideologies, but it's...
I just see smoke here, and with the smoke, there could be fire. And with them being approved by Castle and seeing some of the Castle and see some of the VOD things that I read out last time in the meeting, which process, and you're like, "Well, trust us, we'll take that out." It just, and that's my only concern with it. Way there. I just, it seems like there is some stuff with this that is political, that we've decided either way political, we'll keep it out. And if you could say it's absolutely zero political within the Castle and a program Castle helps create and a program Castle approves, then I might be wrong, but it looks like it. And if something looks like it, I think we might need to take a halt and relook at it to see how that's going. And I understand you did a great presentation, and I'm not knocking your presentation, so it's not, nothing against personal, in my opinion, it was the rollout.
I would just encourage, just one last piece. Anybody who, I mean, we've, we've begged folks to actually look at this, this toolkit, read it, study it, find out not who made it, but what it says, what the activities are asking children to do. Look at it. It's in the li, public library, it's in the schools, it's in our office, it's available. Multiple people have taken us up on that and looked at this.
This is the start, but it's, where are we going with it? Where is it going? Is it going to high school? Is it going to follow this VDOE? Are we stopping right here and you're guaranteed that this is where it stops? There, there, it's a stepping block to where we're going, and like I said, that's my concern.
And I remember my train, so apologize for the departure, but Ms. Brown in her last presentation said that, you know, we would, for the rollout, uh, and I, again...
You're talking about the committee?
Oh, sorry, in the future. She did acknowledge the shortcomings of the previous process, and she did also then say, going forward, we would ensure that we had a different grouping of people involved in the selection process. I think I'm remembering that correctly.
Yeah.
That she did, she did acknowledge that, and she did then say, "This is what we're going to do for future rollouts," which I think is exactly what she came back to us with, with the All in Virginia Plan.
I think what the option would be is to pause it, do the rollout that she wants to do, which is great, and then we can revisit it. And I don't think it'd be too much disruption since only some teachers are doing it. It's not like I'm pausing every teacher out there and saying, "Hey, y'all need to change everything you do." And it doesn't need to be, it's paused starting tomorrow. But I think if we're going to choose, y'all have agreed that the rollout wasn't good, we're going to have a better process for a rollout, or agree that we should have that process, that that was good, then we can pause this to do the rollout for this too, instead of just keep going.
I just want to clarify something. Um, I, I, the only part of the rollout process that I would not have agreed with, it doesn't involve the rollout process, it involves that typically we always want to have parents, I wasn't here, but we always want to have parents on our committees. And so, in the future, we want parents on those committees to be able to be a part of it so they can give us feedback. When it comes to the rollout policy, or portion, I have no issues with rolling out using a piloted program so teachers can get together, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so acknowledging we might have not had the parents' involvement, pause it, to get the parents' involvement would be great. And like I said, that's my biggest thing with it, so.
But we did have parents.
We had parents that worked with the school, that was part of the counselors, that were there, was a...
Their voice doesn't count?
What?
As parents, their role as parents?
It does still count, but their role is now as a separate, it's like joint. In the hospital, if I had to say, "I'm a patient at my hospital once, I want the hospital to do this," it would kind of be like, "Hold on, it's your work." You say, "Hey, I drink the water, so I think we should run the water." You, you kind of have mixed...
And you have, you have their voice.
So, the motion, the motion that's on the table is to pause the, um...
Karen Schools.
Karen Schools, not tomorrow, but when?
After, when a break, or do we give it, or do you want?
Pause it until the next work session.
So, Monday they come in?
So, it would be until the next board meeting, basically, so for voting, so it would be the next board meeting. So, pause it from now, from effective immediately, is that what you're suggesting?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Obey.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Nay.
Motion passes. Vote is five-one?
Five-one and one.
Five-one and one, sorry.
Thanks.
Dr. Goodell?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to congratulate Ella on being student of the month, and, uh, Ms. West and Ms. Northcutt with the Learning Garden, I think that's just, um, great stuff going on. Uh, the Master Gardener Program is, is always, always, uh, informative, and I don't think, uh, the Pecosin Museum, I think the students are really getting some good hands-on STEM activities out there, and, uh, hopefully, we can keep that program going and, and, uh, expanding it to other schools. Also, the admin, the teachers and the council, our Purple Star designation, and WHRO for all their, uh, resources that they provide our, our area.
Mr. Childress?
Yes, I'm repeating, everybody. Congratulations to Ella for our student of the, senior of the month. Uh, the Learning Garden is a wonderful place to educate students. Thank you to WHRO for showcasing these programs. Thank you to counselors for the hard work of the Purple Star. Ms. Wileman, um, we appreciate the historical drawings, it's pretty cool that the students get to see the drawings that were made for their schools. And Dr. Radcliffe and the staff, thank you for all your hard work on these grants. We would have a hard time keeping all these upgrades and keeping our schools good without these grants. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you for doing that because it does help smaller areas like this. And Thatcher, thank you for all the updates. It's very good to hear what schools are doing.
I, I echo all of the, uh, congratulations on all the recogni, all of the recognitions as well. Uh, just want to add in addition, a big thank you to PEF, um, the Education Found, Pecosin Education Foundation had a very successful 5K run as well here recently, and just wanted to call, uh, public recognition and attention to that. It was a wonderful event, and their contributions to the school system, um, certainly do not go unnoticed or unappreciated. And a final congratulations, um, to the ongoing success of our football team, as well as the success of, I think, our field hockey team and cross-country team, and I should stop naming because I may miss them off, but, um, the fall sports, um, at the high school have just been phenomenal, and I've enjoyed attending and watching them, and congratulations to them as well.
Um, want to echo everyone else's comments. I also want to, um, you know, congratulate everybody here for, um, doing what we do for the students. The discussions we just had are very important, while, um, sometimes we all disagree, uh, or we can disagree with each other, um, I think it's very important, very healthy for all of us. So, um, I want to, want to thank everybody for that because, um, it's not, it's very difficult, uh, at times for, uh, people to have those types of discussions. So, just want to thank, and also want to wish everybody...
Chair Burbage?
Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Call and Kendra for coming to speak. Again, um, I'd also like to thank, uh, Ms. Wileman for dropping off the, um, drawings. I think that's, uh, that's a historic document that would have been lost if those tubes would have gotten thrown away. Um, I also want to thank the staff that's involved in the Purple Star Schools. I think it shows our support of military families in Pecosin. I think that's something that's very important. Um, the Learning Garden at the elementary school, I think that's, that's, you know, Ms. West and Ms. Northcutt, the work they do, bringing kids into these outdoor learning environments is huge. And then lastly, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Ella Clark, uh, the senior of the month. I wish her the best of luck in completing her senior year and whatever endeavors biology she pursues.
Thank you. Uh, for me, I echo the sentiments of the board and my fellow board members from Ms. Clark, uh, WHRO, Ms. Wileman, Facella. I hope that we can in some way, um, enshrine and display somehow the documents that are in those tubes for learning, education, even artwork. Um, I think those kinds of things are part of what make Pecosin unique, and having people, you know, willing to look out for us and bring those back to us is, you know, is a, is a cool thing, and it's a great learning, especially for kids who have those inclinations. So, uh, much appreciation there. Thatcher, great job tonight, thank you. And thank you to the admins, um, sitting over there, here, every night, every school board meeting night, late, appreciate the work. It's a, it's a, it's a hard row to hoe, and we appreciate all of the efforts heading into break. I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving, as well as the members of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Tillot?
Um, hard to top all of that, so ditto to everything that's been said, happy Thanksgiving.
Is there any material for board review?
No, ma'am.
All right, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.